Without offering public comment and those people are not required to identify themselves. Any votes that are taken this evening will be conducted by roll call. All supporting materials that have been provided members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. And as Chair, I reserve the right to take items out of order in the interest of promoting an orderly meeting. As the Board will be taking up new business at this meeting, as Chair, I make the following land acknowledgement. Whereas the zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of Arlington, Massachusetts discusses and arbitrates the use of land in Arlington, formerly known as monotomy, in Algonquin word meaning swift waters, the Board hereby acknowledges that the Town of Arlington is located on the ancestral lands of the Massachusetts tribe, the tribe of indigenous peoples from whom the colony, province, and Commonwealth have taken their names. We pay our respects to the ancestral bloodline of the Massachusetts tribe and their descendants who still inhabit historic Massachusetts territories today. So tonight we do have a very full agenda. And in order to try to expedite the meeting, I'll be taking business in the following order. Well, first we'll do docket 384169 Henderson Street. Second, we'll do docket 383916 Lansdowne Road. Then 382220 Pond Lane and then 3836103 Thorndike Street. I'm anticipating that the first two dockets will take approximately a half hour each and the second two will probably take about an hour each. I cannot provide a definitive time that the later items will be taken up. So if you're particularly interested in know the items, I encourage you to check in periodically so you don't miss the meeting. Or you can stick with us the whole night because we're a lot of fun. So with that, we're going to skip ahead on our agenda to item number seven. But first, before opening tonight's meeting for public hearings, here's some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of tonight's business. After I announce each agenda item, I will ask the applicants to introduce themselves for themselves and make their presentation to the Board. I'll then request members of the Board, ask what questions they have on a proposal. And after the Board's questions have been answered, I will open the meeting for public comment. At the conclusion of public comment, the Board will deliberate and vote to either continue or close the public hearing. All votes will be conducted by roll call vote. Final vote on any matter before the Board will be taken at a subsequent meeting. Once the written decision has been drafted and provided to the Board, the decision will then be filed with the Town Clerk, starting the 20 day appeal period under state law. After that time, the applicant may proceed with their building permit. However, under state law, no decision granted by this Board shall take effect until a certified copy of the final decision has been filed with and recorded at the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds in Cambridge by the applicant. So with that, moving to item seven, docket 384169 Henderson Street. If I could ask the applicant or their representative to introduce themselves and tell us what they are proposing to do.
Hi, I'm Catherine McPhail. And what my client would like to do is enclose the existing front porch of the house. And in so doing, they will need to build a landing which would then move the existing stairs about three feet toward the street. So they need relief, a special permit for enclosing the porch.
Okay. Do you have drawings you'd like to share or would you like me to share those?
Well, to be honest, I wasn't planning on presenting till 11 o'clock, so I'm still looking for it. I have, I have the plot plan right now.
Well, I can, let me just go ahead and open this up for you.
Thank you. Um, do you have it? I found, I found it finally.
Here's the plot plan. Hopefully you can see the plot plan.
Sorry, I'm still looking. I think, uh, that's the plot plan.
Okay. So what's, so the front porch here, which is labeled as 807 feet by 1884. That is being enclosed as it is, it's not being expanded.
Correct.
In the way shape of form, it's just being enclosed at the first floor only?
Yes, and the same existing roof. So not changing at all. The only, the, the thing it does change is that we're adding that proposed landing.
And hopefully you see the plans?
There we go.
Okay.
Yeah, so that shows, uh, we've gone to conservation already for this because it's within the setback from L, I think L. Wife Brook in the back and they've approved this particular configuration of the stairs.
And as you say, this is the existing roof, it's just that the sidewalk, the sidewalks are being infilled or reconstructed or whatever.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And this is coming before the Board, this is under 539D, which requires a special permit for the enclosure of an existing porch. That's why the applicant is before us today. Are there any questions from the Board? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and stop the Chair. I'm gonna open the meeting for public comment. Public questions and comments are taken as they relate to the matter at hand. It should be directed to the Board for the purpose of informing this decision. Members of the public will be granted time to ask questions and make comments. Members of the public who wish to speak should digitally raise their hand using the button on the React tab in the Zoom application. Those calling in by phone, please dial star nine to indicate you would like to speak. You'll be called upon by the Chair, asked to give your full name and address for the record, and given time for your questions and comments. And all questions are to be addressed through the Chair, please remember to speak clearly. And once all public questions or comments have been addressed, the public comment period will be closed. So are there any members of the public who wish to address this application, which is docket 3836? Nope, that is the wrong number, thank your pardon. Uh, it's docket 3841, uh, which is 69 Henderson Street. Hand raised, Mr. Moore?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Steve Moore, Piedmont Street. I, um, I joined you late and I apologize. I have one question, looking at the elevations that were displayed earlier. The bump out that's on the second floor, that sticks, as you look at the front of the property, sticks out to the right. What is, what is the purpose of that change to the floor plan?
Well, that actually isn't part of the scope of this project. They're, this project, they're just enclosing the front porch and the, that bump out is already existing.
Oh, oh, my mistake. Uh, then I apologize, Mr. Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address this application? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public comment period. Uh, the Board will now discuss uh, the application and how it wishes to proceed. So just briefly going through the the application that was submitted, will note that the property is non-conforming with regard to frontage and left side depth. And that appears to be the only current and the front yard depth, those are the only non-current non-conformities. And the front yard enclosure of the porch is allowed with a special permit from five, under 539D. Just for the record, I would like to note, um, there's a couple of numbers on the application, which reference specifically the porch, but should reference the dwelling in itself. So the left side yard depth is actually 2.7 feet and will not be changed. The front porch is stepped back from that. And the right side setback is 14.3 at present and will not change either. Otherwise, that, um, this will be, the application lists the same gross floor area before and after. I just wanted to ask, um, I believe it's 114 gross square feet for the adding in the porch. Is the gross four square foot number, is that before the porch is enclosed or after? Do you know?
I think it was the covered porch was included in the gross square footage.
Okay.
For both, in both calculations.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the Board? Or concerns? So section 539D authorizes the Board to approve the enclosure of a porch as a special permit, uh, under section 333, we have our special permit. Well, findings that the Board would need to make, so quickly propose those. Excuse me, the first is that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts. There is a series of houses in a row here that all have, um, front porches. Some of them have been enclosed, some have not. This would be just an additional enclosure which will fit in with everything else in that neighborhood. It's proposed use as a mudroom and clothing storage for the family will be beneficial to, uh, to the family and allow them to, uh, to better use their home and will not have a negative impact, um, on the neighborhood. Uh, second is that the requested use is allowed or allowed by special permit in the district. As we noted, 539D authorizes a special permit. In this case, uh, whether requested use is essential or desirable to public convenience or welfare. Um, as stated earlier, for the public convenience of the applicants, this allows them uh, to better utilize their front porch, uh, for more of the year. Where it's used as a, uh, as a, as mudroom space for them. The requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. It will not impact, uh, traffic congestion at all as far as impact, uh, impact goes from pedestrian safety. Currently, the porch, um, is at an elevation and where, um, it would be impacting already what the, the drivers are able to see coming out of the driveway, so that will not be changed. So it will not create, not make an additional impairment upon pedestrian safety. Uh, the requested use will not overload any public system. Um, it will not impact, um, to any extent the electrical use, um, gas usage or other, uh, systems. Special regulations for the requested use. There are no special regulations, so that's, uh, doesn't matter in this case. The requested use will not impair the character or integrity of the district. Um, as we saw in the images, the proposed infill on the porch is in keeping with the appearance of the neighborhood. As the Board has noted in prior cases, it's, uh, the Board does appreciate that the enclosure of the porch is not intended to just be an extension of the room behind it, but is actually for its own independent use. Um, in this case, as a mudroom and clothing storage. And, um, the Board also appreciates that the, the size of the porch are kept in board of the size of the house, um, which does allow it to sort of keep its initial appearance as a porch. And the requested use will not be detrimental to public health or welfare. It won't have any impact, um, on those and the requested use will not cause an excess of use detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, are there any comments from the Board in regards to those proposed findings? Seeing none, uh, should the Board be inclined to vote in favor of this application? Are there three standard, uh, conditions, which I will read into the record at this time? The first is the plans and specifications approved by the Board for the special permit shall be the final plans and specifications submitted to the Building Inspector of the Town of Arlington in connection with this application for zoning relief. There shall be no deviation during construction from approved plans and specifications without the express written approval of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals. Number two is the Building Inspector is hereby notified there to monitor the site and should proceed with appropriate enforcement procedures at any time they determine that violations are present. Building Inspector shall proceed under section 3.1 of the zoning bylaw and under the provisions of chapter 40, section 21D of the Massachusetts General Laws and institute non-criminal complaints. If necessary, the Building Inspector may also approve and institute appropriate criminal action, also in accordance with section 3.1. And the third is that the Board shall maintain continuing jurisdiction with respect to the special permit grant. Are there any additional conditions which members of the Board feel would be appropriate for this application? Seeing none. Mr. Hanlon, would you be so inclined to draft a decision in favor of approval of this application?
Yes, I'd be pleased to do that.
Thank you. So with that, I believe the Board has all the information it needs in order to, uh, to draft its final decision. Um, so with that, I will go ahead and move, uh, that the zone on ten, close, uh, the public hearing for docket, uh, 384169 Henderson Street. Do a second?
Second.
So with that, so a roll call vote of the Board voting yes or no, uh, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Baranowski?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, uh, so the, uh, hearing for 69 Henderson Street is closed. And, um, at our subsequent, at our next hearing, which will be, uh, two weeks from tonight, we will vote, uh, to approve the final decision.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate your being here. So with that, we'll return to our agenda. We will move to item six on our agenda, uh, which is docket 3839, uh, 16 Lansdowne Street. Uh, or excuse me, Lansdowne Road. If I could ask the applicant to introduce themselves and tell us what they are proposing to do.
Hello, I'm Jeremy Sylvan.
I'm Maddie Hickman. Uh, we are, we're also looking to add some transitional space to our house. We have an existing side porch at the end of our driveway off the kitchen. Uh, and we'd like to enclose it to be a mudroom, it's within the side setback, so need a special permit.
I'm gonna go ahead and website survey. So I'll note this application is a little thin on detail. And so, uh, just to confirm, so the intent is to build directly over the top of the deck and not to, go beyond that, those initial, those original, uh, dimensions?
Yeah, we added, after the initial application, we added some more architectural drawings from the architect working with, so I can share those as well if you'd like, or they're in the application.
If you could go ahead and share those, that would be great.
Yep.
Go ahead and stop my share here. Sir Olson, if you could go ahead and give her permission to share, that'd be great.
So, yeah, this is, um, pardon, the existing or the new deck.
Good, that's the
Can you see my cursor as well?
Yep.
Um, so let me, oh my goodness, I'm sorry, my struggles. So here's the, um, proposal, uh, which is just that to enclose that deck space, but then to have the rear porch. Um, the space under that is just exterior storage. Um, and then we're hoping, I think the new, the new design extends a little bit more towards the front of the property, but the side setback stays exactly the same as it is. Um, and that is in here, I can try to zoom in.
That's the storage.
This is, uh, sorry, let me try to zoom in a little more.
That's actually the level below, there's
That's the little blow, sorry.
Yeah, I think you want to
Sorry, trying to juggle windows here. Um, well, there's the note, replaces the existing deck, um, doesn't encourage any more towards the lot line. And let me see if I can find it.
Yeah, it's on the, yeah, there you are.
That does not have the measurements either.
The measurements for the
The side setback. I'm sorry, let me know if I should scroll to anything in particular or
Oh, thank you.
Somewhere here. There we go. Oh, that's the back deck.
Although it follows the line.
So I think the, the farthest, uh, back edge is four foot 10 from the line.
Which is consistent with
Which is, I think, what the current one is, four foot nine or something like that.
Yeah, on the
Four point nine feet, yep.
Four point nine, sorry. Let me know if you want me to scroll to any additional, uh, image.
If you could go to the, if you have a side elevation?
I don't actually know if we have a 2D.
I think the side image is qualitative, I don't think it, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure we have measurements, we can get that, apologies.
There we go.
Yeah, nothing but measurements.
So the, this, the glazed end wall, that gable wall, is facing onto your budding neighbor, is there any, uh, buffer between the two properties?
Yeah, we have arbor v d.
Okay.
Or the neighbor has arbor v d.
The neighbor has, yeah.
Okay.
And a fence in between.
Yeah.
And so it's, effectively it's the same, uh, so the side yard setback is not changing, it is because, it is growing, um, parallel with the lot line. Um, but what appears to be maybe a foot or two. Um, and then the stairs are being rebuilt, so they'll come farther forward.
Yep.
As things are currently arranged, is it possible to park a car past the front edge of the house?
Uh, yes, but only a subcompact. So we, we normally can fit, uh, we both drive small cars, so we can fit two of our cars comfortably without being, abutting the stairs. Uh, a small car with difficulty can park between the, the staircase and, um, and what is now a storage area.
Okay.
Uh, but, but we do not routinely do that because it's challenging to do and we only have two cars.
Okay. My concern is that you've, you're required to have one parking space and the parking space can't be in the front yard.
I hear you.
So can't be within 20 feet of the street, so there needs to be, or if this is an R1, then, uh, 25 feet from the front yard line. So we need to make sure that there's a, there's a space for a vehicle past the, past that, which may impact the size of the, um, mudroom because you're enlarging it.
I hear you.
A space for an entire car or?
Yes.
Gotcha.
So if you were, if you were maintaining the same dimensions of the porch, it wouldn't be an issue because it's already in existing condition, but where you're reducing the size of that space.
And, and just to be clear, you're not saying we need to be able to fit one car in our entire driveway, but we need to be able to fit one sort of next to the staircase?
So, yeah, so one has to meet the requirements to the parking bylaw, which don't allow you to have a park, establish a parking space in the front yard. Once you've got that one parking space, if you have additional vehicles that are in the driveway, that's okay.
Okay.
Um, but you have to at least provide one space beyond, the front setback line.
That might still be possible here, we can get the measurement on that and check.
Okay. Are there questions from members of the Board?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Just want to add to your comment and, um, there are dimensional requirements for our parking space within the zoning bylaw. So I would have your architect check the parking space based on those dimensions that are in that, and that's in the, um, chapter six of the bylaw.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Any other questions from the Board? Seeing none, I will go ahead, um, and open this hearing for public comment. Uh, just reiterate, public comment is taken as it relates to battered hands, should be directed to the Board for the purpose of helping us inform our decision. Uh, those who are on Zoom who would like to, um, participate, you can, uh, use, raise your hand in the React tab at the bottom of the screen, or if you're on phone, you can dial star nine. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this application? Again, um, this is number 383916 Lansdowne Road. We have Mr. Moore.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, Steve Moore, Piedmont Street. Um, I'm wondering what the current, um, foundation is, I don't know if there is a foundation that's under this deck. Is it just, uh, on pilings or is there some sort of, um, foundation?
Yeah, it's, it's currently on like a cement slab, concrete slab.
Uh, okay, Mr. Chair, then, uh, the enclosing of this deck upward would, uh, be basically in a, sort of an addition to the first floor. Um, but it would not be possible to at a later date, uh, continue it up to a second floor, correct? Since it's on a, not a foundation?
That is likely correct, also just the way that the, the house is arranged, it's a basically a one and a half story house, so it wouldn't actually align in a way that you could use it as a second floor.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just thinking about in the distant past, there were issues about, uh, building up over what had been a porch or a deck and then it becoming a piece of the second story at a later date. And that being, this is, it sounds like this probably is not the case here, but that would, they would, if that was to ever want to be desired, they would have come back to the Board, correct?
Yes.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, Mr. Moore. Are there other members of the Board who wish to, uh, members, excuse me, members of the public who wish to address this application? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close this hearing for public comment. Uh, so returning to the Board, um, so what we have before us, this is an application, there's a, an existing deck with an enclosed, uh, storage underneath the, intent of the applicant is to, um, construct a mudroom on top of the deck, um, which would also then extend, uh, towards the street. And would require the rebuilding of the steps, uh, the steps becoming longer, uh, with a landing at the top. Um, as we had discussed with the applicant, um, we do have a concern that the parking requirements, um, still be maintained because the size of the deck is changing. So we will, uh, return to that, uh, just for going through the application. Note that otherwise, uh, everything in the application is pretty straightforward, everything appears to be conforming, um. So this, uh, is, is a pretty straightforward application of section 539D, um, which requires that the, uh, building upon or expanding a deck, uh, or porch requires a special permit from the Board of Appeals. So there, as we noted before, there are no specific, uh, findings that need to be found under section 539D, so it is just the standard findings under section 333. Before I move on to the findings, are there any other concerns from the Board? Seeing none, um, so the findings, the first is the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts. This will allow the applicants, um, to utilize, uh, better utilize a structure that they have, um, on the side of their house currently. Um, just a small deck which provides entrance into the house. Uh, this will enclose it to provide some weather cover, uh, while entering the house and provide space for, um, for mudroom type functions. Uh, requested use is allowed. Or allowed by a special permit in the district. Uh, this is allowed under section five three nine D with a finding of the board. Uh, the requested use is essential or desirable to public convenience of welfare. Uh, this allows the homeowners to better utilize their house, um. And will hopefully enable them uh to uh reside longer um in their house, make better use of of their home. The requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. Um, the only. Thing possibly related to traffic congestion, as we had noted, is the is the. The parking space issue, um, otherwise it won't. Change the number of of cars on the street nor the way that they travel, um, and this is away from the curb, and so it will not affect pedestrian safety. Uh, requested use will not overload any public system, uh, be minor. Uh, impacts if at all on the on electrical systems. Special regulations for the requested use are fulfilled. There are no special, uh, there are no. Special regulations. Requested use will not impair the character or integrity of the district. Um. This seems to be a fairly well thought out design, um, which is very open and light, so hopefully, um. Will be well enjoyed by the by the homeowner. And requested use will not be detrimental to public health or welfare. Um, it won't create any. Um, any issues in that regards, and requested use will not cause excess of use detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, it remaining a single family home in a single family district. Um, are there any questions or? Uh, comments from the board in regards to those findings?
One quick question, um. I take it that. There, this is also like the last case, there's a lot of enclosed. Side and front porches in this neighborhood.
Yeah, there's not, it's it's a much more. It's a much less uniform district. Than on the prior street. So there's sort of a variety of styles, um. There are definitely homes that have smaller, you know, enclosed porches in the front. Um, I did not take notice specifically if there were others that had them on the side.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so should the board be inclined to vote in favor of this application? Uh, there are the three standard conditions which we read in prior. I would propose. Um, an additional condition um in regards to the question about the parking space that so that the applicant. Is to confirm. That a parking space. Exists. On the driveway. Beyond the front setback. And then if not. The addition. Or yeah, it's called addition, the addition. Is limited. To the. I call it the width. The width of the existing deck. So the applications, the applicant is to confirm that a parking space exists on the driveway. Beyond the front setback. If not. The addition is limited to the width of the existing deck. And so basically, um, it won't hold you up any any farther, but if uh, if there's not a full parking space there. You're limited to the. To the size of that deck that's there now.
Okay.
Just so we don't create a new nonconformity with that. Are there any other questions or conditions from the board?
I have a quick question, I'm sorry to.
Yes, please.
Um, if we, if we do need more space than the current design for our parking space, can we reduce the size to like meet that requirement?
Yes, so by writing the condition that way, you're allowed to, you don't have to come back before us to change the drawing.
Okay, even if it ends up being like a in-between size from the current design and the existing deck size?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes. Say, uh, let me do this with the deck. Or. With required. To comply. With the parking requirement.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Hanlon, would you be willing to draft a? Decision in favor of approval of this application?
Yes, I would.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Unless there's anything further from members of the board. Now we'll go ahead and um. Move that the zoning Board of Appeals for the town of Arlington. Close public hearing for docket three eight three nine sixteen Lansdowne Street. The board will prepare a draft decision uh. For review and will be approved at the at our meeting in two weeks. Uh, so with that, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mr. Hanlon. Uh, so roll call vote of the board voting yes or no to close the hearing, uh, Mr. Dupont.
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Barnowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, we are closed on uh sixteen Lansdowne Street. Thank you very much for coming before us this evening.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. So with that, I will move uh. To item number four on our agenda, which is docket three eight two two twenty Pond Lane. Uh, this is a continuance of a. A hearing that was opened um. While back, uh, there were some significant changes that were made. The board had requested that the application be re. Uh, re-advertised, uh, so that was done. And so now the. For the uh, the board is ready to take this matter back up again. Uh, so if I could, um. Ask attorney Troyer to go ahead and uh tell us. What the applicant is proposing to do.
Great, thank you very much. It's good to see everyone again. Uh, again, for the record, my name is Doug Troyer. Uh, I represent the applicant twenty Pond Lane LLC. With me tonight is Nick and Belinda Boyt, who are the uh, uh, the managers of the LLC and current owners of the property. Uh, also with me tonight is John Wheatley, uh, who is the potential purchaser of the property. Uh, my client entered into a P uh purchase and sale agreement with him, uh, subsequent to our original application, original hearing. And as a result of that, we now have a known user, uh, who is going to be looking to purchase the property. Um, and uh, as a result, we 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 filed our application. Um, I think since it has been some time, I'll just give kind of a brief background of uh, of this project and kind of the history. Of this site. Uh, this property contains a single family dwelling as well as a commercial garage. Uh, this. Commercial gar- garage was constructed back in nineteen sixty-three. It's a pre-existing non-conforming use on the property. Uh, the original owners of this property owned it up until two thousand and fifteen and various, um. Uh, it was all within the family. It kind of changed uh, the entities that owned it, but it was uh primarily. Uh, owned by a Simonian uh, from approximately nineteen sixty-one all the way up until about two thousand and fifteen when they sold the property to the existing. Uh, owner Nick and Belinda Boyt of twenty Pond Lane. Uh, this property back in nineteen sixty-three, Mr. Simone, and at that time, um. Wanted to build a commercial garage uh on his property. He sought uh permission from the town and obtained. Uh, the ability to construct this this structure that is currently on there. Uh, the structure that was constructed is exactly. Uh, the same that was constructed back in nineteen sixty-three. Uh, he obtained. Uh, another subsequent decision from the zoning Board of Appeals that allowed him to rent out the structure after it was constructed. Uh, to an entity that basically utilized it for storage of equipment and vehicles and for office use. Um, subsequent to that, from I would say nineteen sixty-three all the way up until about two thousand and fifteen. Uh, there was uh all kinds of different types of uses that were going on on this property. Uh, my client now. Uh, when they purchased this property in two thousand and fifteen, have done some significant upgrades to the single family home. Um, they uh. Went before the town and obtained all necessary um things in in order to really beautify the house. They also took it upon themselves to really. Um, turn this commercial garage into uh exactly what it was originally permitted for, which was a storage of equipment and storage of vehicles. And for office purposes and have been doing that since two thousand and fifteen. Uh, they also beautified the the property itself, uh, turning it from what looked like a auto uh. Garage into a pleasantly looking building that that's currently on on the property. They also did some landscaping to the side. Uh, over the last several years, uh, which has beautified the property as well. The clients now are looking uh to sell the property. Uh, we originally came before you back in uh, the end of two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, it's my position from reading the uh, the instruments that were originally granted. And how the use of this property has been conducted over the years. That it is legal for someone to utilize this garage as they have been, uh, for commercial purposes, for the storage of vehicles, office use and for. Storage of equipment uh that pertains to whatever entity that may be renting it or 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 the owner could. Put in some personal items as well. But in order to sell this property, uh, my client wanted to make sure, um, it was clear that that type of use can continue to go on and. In this situation, because we now have a known user, uh, who, by the way, by introduction. Uh, his name is John Wheatley. He's the owner of WR uh Shitook and Company. It's a hardware. Um, store. It's uh one of the oldest uh. Companies or hardware stores in the area, and over the last decade, he has looked to uh grown. Grow his hardware store throughout the area and currently has three or four, four actual uh physical sites. Um, he sees this garage as a, it's a unique oper- it's a unique property where he may be able to utilize it. Uh, for extra storage. Uh, this is not something in which he's looking to have a uh Monday through Friday. Um, employees coming on a day-to-day basis. This is merely, uh, he has a property, he's purchasing a single family home. And the garage in hopes to basically rent out the uh single family home, utilize it for what it has been utilized for years. Uh, and then also if he has extra storage for his hardware stores, uh, during busy seasons, he can basically. Have a pickup truck or a small commercial truck. Uh, come to the site, open up the garage and basically store certain materials. He'd also like to have the opportunity to store. Potential company vehicles, uh, and potentially uh utilize it for office purposes, uh, if need be. Uh, we're looking for a light use here, very similar to what has been going on at Mr. Boyd. Uh, and the companies that he has rented to or several years have done. Um, and we're not looking to increase traffic. We're not looking to basically change any uh. Aspects of the structure itself. It's merely a trying to confirm that the current use. Can continue, and now that we have this known user, seek a special permit that it's not more detrimental detrimental to the neighborhood. Uh, I'm, I have them both with me to answer any questions which we may have. Uh, we were also um. Uh, able to have a a butters meeting about a week and a half ago with uh three butters, uh, who had submitted uh certain. Uh, letters and also uh requested. Uh, and have appeared at some of these prior hearings. I felt that it was very productive because I felt there was some, uh, there was a misunderstanding as to the. Uh, to the extent of what operations my client was looking to utilize this for. And I felt like we had good conversations. I think uh, one of the biggest concerns was uh if in fact. This use uh is is allowed to continue or this use is allowed to proceed. Uh, if someone wants to increase this use going forward, there's a new owner, would they have to come back to the board? And my position would be be similar to what we're doing here. We would need to seek a an amendment of that and uh. Uh, we we talked about potentially if if need be, having a condition to that effect. Um, I think we also talked about. Some uh. Uh, basically the size of the vehicles that we were anticipating coming on and off the site. Again, it's uh, it's literally. Uh, during the busy seasons, he may have some extra snowplows that he can basically buy that may not be able to be fit into. He has storage for all of his uh hardware stores. This is extra storage similar to what has been going on. And have the ability to bring some of these extra uh storage supplies to the garage, uh. By by uh pickup trucks or by small commercial vehicles. We're not, we're not talking about anything large, crush tractor trailers, anything along those lines. Um, and he's looking to have the ability to do it uh during the. As any other property owner would basically be able to do and to store stuff in in their garage. Uh, but because it is a commercial nature and because it says a pre-existing non-conform use, we wanted to come for the board to really get your blessing. Uh, and to hear from the butters and hopefully address any concerns that they may have. Uh, with that. We believe that we have uh provided enough information, uh, sufficient information to justify. If it's necessary, a special permit and a finding from this board that uh what we are looking to do is very similar. Um, along the lines of what has historically been done there. It is less intensive than what was going on there back in the. Seventies, eighties and nineties, and we're trying to bring this back uh to what this commercial property was ultimately uh granted for, which was the storage of. Uh, vehicles and uh equipment of the uh and office use basically. So I. Happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you for that. Um, I had a couple of quick, uh, hopefully quick questions. Um. So I know that uh Shadow Hardware does offer uh servicing of um. Small engine equipment, so like repair of. Snow blowers, repair of lawn mowers, things of that nature. Is that kind of work? When to be happening at this site?
And John, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the answer to that is no, we're not looking to do repair work of uh snow blowers of of the like. Uh, John, can you confirm that for me?
That's correct. We we do not want to do any repairs there at all. No, just sto- just storage.
Okay. And similarly, there wouldn't be any like assembly of screens or any of that other kind of work that that happens in the stores.
That is my understanding as well, and John, please correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's correct.
To the, the nature of the stuff that would be stored, um. On that site, uh, I'm assuming it would sort of be sort of the gamut of what's available at the hardware store.
That is correct. It's basically uh extra items, uh, uh, during busy seasons, uh, where there may be some extra items. And one of the examples that John has given me when I was talking to him, and the reason I brought a snow blower is, is basically, he can. Imagine, you you go to BJ's to buy in bulk and you're able to basically sell, similar for a hardware store buying product. If he's able to buy a bulk. Of uh winter shovels, uh, snow blowers, things along those lines, where in fact, uh, he may not have the room. Uh, in his existing warehouses, he wants to utilize this um, this garage. Uh, for the ability to have extra uh, extra supply, uh, and basically utilize it on an as-needed basis. And it would be, it would be basically the same type of materials, um, that he would be looking to offer for sale at at his hardware store.
Okay, and in terms of, uh, so. Like when bulk deliveries come, the bulk deliveries, excuse me, the bulk deliveries would be made to a store, and then the surplus would be brought. By his own um. Means to this place. It wouldn't be that. The, whoever is, is the distributor would be coming to this location to uh to deliver goods.
I think that is uh correct. I don't think you're looking at having large vehicles coming and 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 dumping things. My understanding. And John can correct me is uh, we're looking to have uh pickup trucks and small commercial vans and small commercial. Uh, type vehicles at the worst, uh, basically coming onto the property. He would open up the garage, pull into the garage and basically unload. And inside at the garage, um, and then basically uh depart and then basically come back. Uh, send uh employees to come back to pick those items up when they would need to stock uh their stores. And again, this is on an as-needed basis and it's not on a um, it's not on a regular basis. It's really just an extra storage. Due to the fact that this is a unique property, uh, and quite honestly, having uh the type of user that we're looking to do for this commercial. Uh, site, um, is is really, um, we believe is a very reasonable and in line with uh what has historically been done there.
And then my last question is that would there be any storage material outside the garage? Would all be interior to the garage?
And again, my understanding is no. Uh, and in fact, uh, the landscape work that uh my client did. Uh, a few years ago, uh, actually took away a lot of uh storage area to the right side of the uh, of the garage. There used to be a large. Parking area where vehicles were actually stored on the outside of 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 this garage for years. Uh, that is no longer even an option because we, my client basically had put in, uh, it's it's a gravel landscaped area that abuts the town's property now. Uh, so no, uh, the intention is to have no storage other than inside of the garage.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, those are my initial questions. Uh, other questions from the board? Great. Thank you very much. Uh, those are my initial questions. Uh, other questions from the board?
Mister Chairman?
Mister Dupont?
So um, I I note um, Mister Troyer that in the application. And then as it's carried into your original memorandum and your supplemental memorandum. You started out by saying that you were looking for uh continuation of the use of existing commercial garage. For commercial office use, storage of vehicles and equipment. And then light construction work. And then as you progressed with your supplemental memorandum.
Yep.
You remove the light construction work and you put in the ability to perform minor maintenance to vehicles. And equipment within the garage. So I'm wondering what that actually is a reference to?
Yeah, so that's reference to the fact that uh because there wasn't, uh, there is uh, I think there's a lift and uh Mister. Um, Wheatley is uh wanting for personal vehicles if uh to basically, like any other garage owner, this this garage. Just actually happens to have a lift in it and he's looking to basically do his uh uh potential like uh changes of tires, things along those lines. Uh, within the garage. Uh, the ultimate purpose uh of the application. Uh, the original application was to allow a, because we were thinking maybe a contractor would purchase this and they may want to do. Some winter painting or may want to do some winter, um, you know, uh, some woodwork and that that's why we're looking for some construction. That is not the case now. Now the main purpose of this garage is for uh the storage of vehicles, storage of uh. Uh, of equipment, uh, materials from his store. Uh, I threw in the maintenance of uh. Of 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 an auto be, of of auto personal and 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 only personal and only. Company-related uh trucks within, within the garage. Uh, that, that is it. It's not to be an auto body service shop like it was. We're not looking to have customers. It's just the ability to basically, if he wants to do some work on some of his vehicles that are being stored there, he's able to do so.
So just to clarify if I may then. So in the original um iteration of this, it sounded like it could be the storage of vehicles from a number of sources. And are you saying now that this would be a storage of vehicles limited to? The owner's vehicles or are other people's vehicles possibly going to be stored there?
This application and John, correct me if I'm wrong, is for the storage of his personal uh vehicles uh and also storage of his company's. Uh, vehicles and we, we are not envisioning a uh lot of vehicles being stored in this facility, but there may be a few trucks. Um, you know how there's uh. Uh, pickup trucks with snow, snowplow things on the fronts uh that they may uh store a couple of those uh in the evenings and and things along those lines. But we're not looking for significant storage and any storage of vehicles is going to be either personal or it's going to be related to his company.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions from the board?
Mister Chairman?
Mister Hanlon?
I'm. I was sort of impressed by the reference to the conversation, Troyer, that you had with the neighbors and uh. Thought that if. Activities on site were to include something that is not on the list of the kinds of things that you're saying right now. Um, that you'd envisioned coming back and expanding the special permit uh in order to. Uh, and proposing anyway to have uh it amended to allow for things that are new. And that at least suggests to me that that. What we should be looking here to do is to get down on paper the specific things. That you imagine doing now and in the foreseeable future. With the limitations that you've been just talking about. So if you're talking about storing of vehicles, you should be talking about storage of personal vehicles and.
And Mister Hanlon, I think it's it's pretty clear. It's it's storage of uh personal vehicles and company vehicles as well as uh equipment that could be. Extra storage for the hardware store. Uh, and that, that, those are, those are the items that we are looking to basically have the ability to store. And and to have storage uh limited to the interior of the garage.
So I think this is a, this is a very helpful way to go. We'll have to hear what everybody else thinks, but. It does seem to me that that our objective here ought to be to capture those things that are, that you've been talking about that are in your plan. And in a reasonably precise way, that doesn't leave a lot of, I mean. Commercial use, for example, would not be as as suitably precise way. Uh, with the idea that that things can change, both ways they can change and uh. And those can be the subject of a later kind of conversation with the board. And I take it that the applicant is actually thinking about proceeding in that, in that way. Is that correct?
I think that is correct. I think uh, and and like I said, like, I'll let the butters talk and I'm I'm hoping that I'm not making any misrepresentations, but my. My gut uh from leaving the butters meeting was that we were able to explain actually what we're looking at. And one of the biggest concerns that I had or that they seem to have is uh what happens when uh Mister Wheatley sells this property? And somebody comes in and and wants to do an auto body shop, like wasn't in the history or something along those lines. Uh, or in intensify the use to do it more, uh, would they have to come back to the board? And my reading and the whole reason I'm here today is because uh we are changing uh the type of use. Um, I don't believe we're changing the type of use. I believe we're still maintaining the the fact that we're storing um uh vehicles and equipment. Uh, but to basically go through a purchase and sale and also because of the history of this property, I think it makes sense to uh. Um, identify exactly what use can, can continue to to proceed going forward. So I think we're on the same page there.
That was a good, I mean, that was that last sentence, I like particularly. I think it's kind of confusing. We have referring back to the very.
Yeah.
Uh, not, to not very clear opinions way back a long time ago. And I take it that we're on agreement that if we were to approve a, a permit. That what we approve here is the exclusive list of the things that. Uh, you'd be allowed to do and it would supersede. The earlier uh, the earlier permit so that this is the only thing we have going forward and we're not looking. Later at the idea of saying, well, we have three permits here and you can't do it under this permit, but you could do it under.
Right, I wouldn't, yeah. So if anyone wanted to seek an amendment, they would be going off of the most, hopefully a grant of this permit identifies what the uh. Current law of the land is for the use on this property. If anybody wants to change that use, you refer to this permit going forward. And I think that that will not only uh. Uh, bring clarity to the board, but also to the others.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mister Hanlon. Uh, anyone else in the board?
Mister Chair?
Mister LeBlanc?
Um, I just have one kind of. Comment question thing, I guess. Um. I'm kind of thinking in my head, we might want some type of condition if we do go. Forward with this about what types of materials can be stored in there. Um. You know, I'm just thinking, it's very broad of a topic and there's a lot of, you know, higher hazard. Items that could potentially be stored there, it sounds like. Um, you know, there are a lot of. Sort of high hazard items you can pick up at the local hardware store and, you know, without knowing too much about what this building has. Um. You know, in terms of a fire suppression system or anything like that, I just want to make sure we're. Not inviting some higher hazard storage materials to be stored here and creating uh. You know, an issue later on.
May I ask, may I ask a question? Is there something that identifies what is considered hazardous, hazardous materials? And maybe we can put a condition that no storage of hazardous materials according to the bylaw. Um, because I don't, we're not looking to basically uh store any hazardous materials uh within, within the site. Um. And uh, I'm wondering if there, I I don't know that the bylaws off the top of my head, but if there is a certain. Type of hazardous materials that are identified, uh, that would constitute hazardous materials, maybe we could put a condition to that, to that effect and, and as well.
I don't think there's anything specifically in the zoning bylaw, but the building code does define those.
We could certainly indicate, think, you know, that. Storage. That meet the requirements of a hi- of high hazard by the state building code would not be allowed, do something along those lines.
Yep.
And John, just, I I apologize, Mister Chair. I just want to confirm my client. John, I'm assuming that I am not speaking out of hand that I I am being accurate.
Yeah, I'm thinking mostly of. Non-hazardous products come to mind. We've talked about snow blowers, lawn mowers.
Okay. That's fine. I just wanted to confirm that uh we're not looking at storing. Okay, yeah. Thank you.
But not like thirty, forty cases of Coleman fuel.
I, it it, correct.
Okay. Other questions for the board? Now I'm gonna go ahead and open up the hearing for public comment. Reminder, public comment is taken as it relates to the matter at hand, should be directed to the board for the purpose of helping us inform our decision. Those members of the public who wish to uh be recognized can raise their hand using the uh. Raise hand button under the react tab. If you are calling in by phone, you may dial star nine. Uh, you'll be called upon by the chair and given time for your questions and comments. Um. And once all public questions and comments have been addressed or we've um. Gone about thirty minutes or so, um, I will go ahead and close the public comment period. Um. So we've, are there any members of the public who wish to address uh this application? Um, especially like to hear from any of the butters if they. Uh, who took part in the, the meeting with the applicant, if they're available. Um. So we have uh Michael Semiter?
Buddy, can you hear me okay?
We can, yes, thank you.
Um, well, thank you, everybody uh for appearing tonight and also thank to, uh, thank you to the boys uh for. Uh, helping us understanding better what the future use is going to be. Um, I think it has never really been about. Any personal issues we had as neighbors. Uh, this was never the case. Um, I think uh everybody was very respectful in the previous uses. Uh, of the property and uh especially uh me and my family, we just moved in about a year ago and we are. Expecting to stay here for many decades. We just, since the first hearing where I was able to provide my comment, we got our first son. Uh, so we have had some time with a newborn. Um, and I think this is also part of the reason why. I'm speaking today. Um. Again, thank you also for bringing the butters together and kind of uh listening to what the proposal is. Um. I think we learned uh like that John is really a nice person and we would love to have him as a neighbor. Like as we uh parted ways and so on, I feel like it was very cordial across uh across everybody. Um. Really, the, the outstanding concerns that I had as a very, I think, structured thinker and very rational thinker was. What is this permit or this uh proposal going to allow in the future, right? What if John or Mister Wheatley is not going to be our neighbor anymore? What is going to be allowed then? Um. And I have a lot of, I feel like structural issues and I don't know if the board had the opportunity to read my letter on those things where I outlined a lot of those issues and. Critique points, um. Especially when it comes to citing previous users at the property um as a reference point for the future use of the property. I feel like this is inappropriate because historic users were not allowed, simple as that. So we should not. Use this as the measuring stick for us uh to say that um. A reduced use should be measured against those illegal users in the past. Um, that's one thing. Um, and then I think also what is really left when it comes to permitted uses, at least from the public records request that I uh was able to obtain. Um, was really uh only one special permit from nineteen sixty seven. Uh, the use of the Harrington Equipment Company. Uh, where it was clearly outlined, two employees, including the owner, plus one pickup truck. Um, being stored uh at this um, at this property, right? And any extension beyond that. Um, would be. A new different use of the property. Um, and I feel like the way how the. Previous uh applications was written kind of distracts from this fact a little bit, right? Like, what are future uh uses? Is it going to be? Uh, vehicle maintenance or not because it was done in the past. Uh, is it going to be? Um, some other forms as users. It's, it's very unclear to me. Um, in particular, also, it is unclear still to me, even though we had the meeting, what is the extent of the use uh in future, right? What is, how many? Um, deliveries should we expect? And I don't even know if, if it's. Appropriate for us to say we can only allow one delivery a month, right? I I don't know if you can say that. Um, that's kind of a question I have to myself. Uh, one thing I want to also outline is. Um, that. The current traffic situation on Pond Lane is almost unbearable at this point, uh especially during rush hour. Um, I did some um traffic counting as I was feeding my son because I had a good look over the, the street as um in in his room. And there is about three hundred to four hundred cars per hour going uh through Pond Lane already uh during rush hour. And I think it would be very detrimental to the neighborhood if there's any commercial traffic being added to that. Uh, in particular, also, we had in the past situations where box trucks would come into Pond Lane because. GPS systems would not direct them away and then they would get stuck because the underpass. Uh, is too low for them. And then they did not have any means of turning around. Um, and I think also Mister Troyer pointed out many times that. Uh, the uh, the boys made some improvements when it comes to landscaping. This also means that. Uh, the turnaround radius was reduced. So larger trucks are not able to turn around in the street. Unless they go onto the abutting uh property, uh, town's property where the um. Uh, where the crew uh team is from, from Arlington and Belmont. Um, so many concerns when it comes to traffic. And I think also I want to close with. Uh, the references in the current application that the existing structure is not going to be changed or altered. Um. I want to highlight that there haven't been any um certificates of um. Sorry, what is it called? Certificates of. Uh. So again, for of occupancy, thank you. There haven't been any certificates of occupancy applied for in the past for those previous uses. So we don't even know if the current existing structure. Is adequate to existing laws to be used the way how it was used or how it's going to be used in the future. Uh, it was permitted uh as a garage, not a commercial garage, as a garage in nineteen sixty-three. For the storage of equipment. Uh, I don't know if the building. And there have been many references that no changes were made to the building. I don't know if the building is still adequate in today's. Uh, day and age to today's laws and um. The way how it's proposed to be used. Like, is a lift, a car lift even allowed in there? I don't know. Um, in addition, the um. The supplemental filing for the way how it's being used, there's uh the use of a forklift being proposed. Um. So I'm, I'm curious if, if this should be allowable. To have a forklift on site or not. So there's many, many open questions for me still, uh, even though, again, I want to highlight. The meeting went well. We, we, we kind, it was cordial. We would love to have John as our neighbor. He seems to be a very nice person. Um, and it's just that the application is very spotty in in many ways. There's many diverging. Um. Suggestions of uses. There's many references to prior legal uses. Uh, and there is also. Um, today's day and age when it comes to traffic and the detriment to the neighborhood and all these other concerns. Uh, are not being addressed in this application. Um, so yeah.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public who wish to address this application? Mister Moore?
Yes, thank you, Mister Chair. Steve Moore, Piedmont Street. Um. Uh, I, I, I want to applaud the parties, uh, both the neighbors and the current owners and the potential future owners for. Having this discussion. I think it's uh, it's always very helpful to hear things get aired before a decision gets made and. Uh, have it all contribute to the language of the actual decision in the end. Um. I, I guess I would piggyback uh on Mister Hanlon's comments about. Some of the specificity in the listing of of uses. I think it sounds to me like everything is very close in terms of getting. The neighborhood agreeing, the current owners agreeing, the future owner and the uses that they are proposing. To agree. It sounds to me though like one more, one more phase of that is required, just because. I, I think the big concern about the residents here is a sort of a mission creep potential of. Right now, there's a lot of, we intend to do this, our plans are to do this. We, we think mostly to store this kind of. Uh, equipment on the property. Um, but there's uh, there, there perhaps is some significant wiggle room there to have. The mission creep occur, which I think concerns the neighbors. Um. Um, the traffic, of course, in this area is quite tight, as the last speaker just spoke to. It's it's a real challenge near Spaldon there. And the fact that we're having a commercial use plunked in the middle of a residential use is causes uh this consternation that I think we're hearing tonight. So I guess I would just counsel or suggest one more phase of getting written down a little more specificity into the the words of the the uses and make that a condition of approval of the eventual application would be good. Now, I know it's been going on for a long time and there's probably some frustration there, but I think it sounds to me to be very close and I think I would uh hope that perhaps one more phase of that sort of negotiation could could occur that would satisfy everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Are there other members of the public who wish to address this application? See, none could go ahead and close the public comment period uh for this application. So what the board has before it, uh this is an application to um effectively uh revisit what the use, what the allowed use is at the um in the rear building at twenty Pond Lane. Uh, this has been noted before, this was constructed in the sixties, uh it was granted a special permit to allow it to be operated for a variety of commercial purposes. Over the the intervening sixty years, um some of the uses have met those criteria, some of those uses have not met the criteria. Um, as of late, it has been meeting uh the criteria for what it ought to be used for. And the applicant is seeking to sell the property and the sale is contingent on um a continuation or a modification of the existing permits to allow the proposed use uh for that. This is in the R two uh residential district typically this uh if the applicant was to come to us today with a house on a property and propose to build a commercial garage, the board would not have the ability to grant that request. Uh, so this is without of uh and not even with a variance because it would be a variance for use which the town does not allow. So uh this is sort of a unique situation um where there is this existing use and um the board has the jurisdiction to to sort of set the parameters on it or to uh deny its continued use um in the manner with which it's previously been uh proposed. Uh, similar to Mr. Hanlon and as Mr. Moore said, uh you know, I'm glad that the there has been these conversations, uh the board is in uh receipt of a very uh thorough set of notes. Um, I uh the uh the the budding, the across the street neighbor, uh Mr. Semiter and the Mr. Handler and I have sort of taken a a first look at um what would make sense uh if we were to try to um allow this with with conditions, what conditions would make sense and try to address the, not only the concerns of the the butters, but also to make sure that it uh by allows for the further uh use of the property by the applicant uh for the use which they would intend. Is it like, just first question to the board, are there any members of the board who are um concerned about um the continued use of the the property in its current form where it has a uh residential building um at the street and a commercial building at the rear?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dupont?
So I'm not sure that this is exactly what you mean, but I I did want to uh comment. So when we look at the uh nonconforming use, you know, we say it's the continuation or extension of an existing use. And so in the first iteration application and memo, um a- and I really uh compliment Mr. Troyer on giving such a thorough background to this history so that we did understand, in fact, what the property had been used for because it made it easier to assess, you know, what was being proposed. And in the first version, um you know, where it it did say that uh it was use of existing commercial garage, commercial office use, storage of vehicles and equipment. That felt like it was consistent with the uh, you know, the historical use of the property. So it did feel more like the continuation of an existing use. However, the addition of the possibility of um storage um for the hardware uh store seems a little bit to be difference uh difference of kind and degree. Um, you know, when I looked at the bylaw, you know, the only place that you can have storage is in the industrial district. And and I feel like, you know, you could sort of line up, like I said, the first, you know, the uses historically with the first version before the uh storage of um you know, hardware uh materials and product was being proposed. And when I look at the supplemental memorandum, it says that, you know, palletized products, large boxes, snow blowers, lawn mowers, ice melts, salt, sand. So it sort of runs the gamut, so basically it's inventory for the hardware stores. And that seems to be much more um intensive uh use than just using it to store some vehicles um or to use it for office space. And I think that, you know, the prior uses and the first use that was being proposed, we sort of understand the scope and the end intensity of what came before and what was being proposed originally. However, this storage of goods, and it seems like it could be substantial, um i- there's nothing to compare it to. I mean, we don't have any idea whether or not we would be looking at a trip a week, a trip a day, five trips a day. And so that's a concern for me because it feels like it is not just an extension of an existing use. It feels like it's an addition of another use. And so I think it's a difference in uh quality uh and not just degree. So I have reservations based upon those uh those considerations.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Dupont.
May I comment to that or am I closed off?
Um, I will allow it.
I just wanted to, and respectfully, uh the nineteen I think it's a nineteen sixty seven uh permit uh and Mr. Hanlon in indicates that uh he believes that it's only for office and for storage of vehicles. Uh, page two of that decision also uh active business and equipment storage purposes. So I do have uh, I do have a permit, uh and I do have a a history of uh equipment being stored. Uh, not only vehicles, but also equipment being stored in there. And um, so I don't think this is a a new use, I'm not expanding the use. It's basically uh it they rented the property and that that permanent sixty seven was specifically to allow the property to be rented uh for storage of vehicles, office use and for um equipment and storage use. And uh, I, so I don't believe we are looking at a substantial increase, but I I just wanted to clarify that, that there is a history and there is a permit that does allow for the storage of uh of equipment and materials. Thank you for so much, I apologize to interrupt.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hammer?
Uh, Roger, if you can go for it.
I I just wanted to make a quick uh comment about that. I think there's a difference in kind between storage of equipment and storage of retail inventory. And that's what it seems like to me, and that's the reason that I have a concern. So I just wanted to clarify that that's the basis for my comments.
Yeah, and and just sort of horizontally, that that permit related to uh batteries and uh batteries and battery charging devices is was the specific uh equipment which was uh being stored back in that time, but it was awesome. I will, I will, I will uh cease talking at this point, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Troyer. Mr. Hanlon?
Um, so what we've been saying, talking about in the last couple of minutes is exactly the conversation that I was hoping that we would avoid. Um, I thi- it's now getting on, it's between nineteen, i- it's it's over sixty years ago. Uh, that those railroad tracks actually were railroad tracks then, and it was in the day when railroads used to stop at each place along the way and and have deliveries like trucks did. And I suppose in those days we would be asking ourselves what the frequency of stopping would be on on the railroad. Um, and I just don't think it's very productive now to go back and try to think about what you might be able to tease out of some combination of the languages and practice that happened uh sixty years ago. Uh, I do think that it, I think what's important now is to sort of translate that into something that is doable today, that's acceptable today and that uses practices of today and concepts that that are appropriate today. And if we think that there's a, we that in part can be done by looking at the quality of what I mean, the degree, not not quality in the sense of how nice it is, but the nature of what it is that's being stor- stored. And that's been the thing that we've been most doing. If we still think that that maybe that gives rise to the possibility that of an intensity that is more than we think ought to happen today, uh then we should figure out what that is. If it's a matter of how many cars, trucks there are, and if it's ten a day, it's too much. If it's one a day, it's maybe not too much, then we can, we can address that. And what I'm hoping that we come from this, if we can come to any kind of something where what we say is 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 yes to this, um, then it seems to me that that it would be something that where we independently sort of design what is appropriate today, recognizing that it's a different time today and recognizing it that we're not trying to replicate or interpret history and the text of the past. We're trying to translate that into something that is consistent with the policy of the bylaw, which is basically to amortize these uses over time. Then it isn't necessarily what the bylaw is about to let it go another sixty years. Um, and to regulate the intensity and to regulate the type of thing that goes on that way so that it's an appropriate resolution for now in all those ways. And then that is our starting point. And after that, we start here, we do not try to go back and figure out what we might have meant in nineteen sixty three. We have have now restated it. It's sort of like having the Civil War amendments solve the problems that the Civil War was aimed at. And that's the end, you know? Well, it it recently we sort of have, but you don't go back uh and try to reconstruct it um uh from the past. So I'm really sympathetic with the substance of Mr. Dupont's uh uh submission that there's more to figuring out what the appropriate activities on this site is than what we just talked about recently. And it's not just the things that are stored, but what we should be trying to do is deciding sensibly what should be, what can be stored, what can't be stored, how intense the use is, get that in as specific a form as we can and recognize that the way to go forward from here is not to try to anticipate, try to think about parsing the language that of whatever we might come up with now, but it's to go back to the same problem that we have. Here's something that's new, should it be allowed or should shouldn't it be allowed? And that should involve a future conversation with his board and with the butters. Uh, Mr. Semiter promised to be around for a number of decades now and he'll have a long memory and we certainly will be able to take advantage of his expertise. I do not promise to be around for a couple more decades or to be very useful if I were, but the life goes on and we, it's important to be dynamic in the way we go about uh dealing with all this. And to me, it's a great accomplishment actually to replace the old permits, not try to parse them anymore, but to replace them with something that restates what's allowed now in accordance with the conditions now and let's just go forward with an ongoing conversation as needs may change.
Thank you, Mr. Hamlin. Um, so for the purpose of our discussion, um I had sort of put together some notes about that can uh things that the board may want to condition, um should it be inclined to approve? What would effectively be a new special permit for the use of this property? So one was about the the hours of operation um that the the board has the ability to set hours of operation for you uses, where this is in a residential district and is a um sort of an unusual commercial use, uh should the board be wanting to um to impose some hours of operation uh in searching for something that, you know, made some sense and didn't sound arbitrary. Um, the town um in its bylaws has the noise abatement bylaw which uh restricts the use of loud uh outdoor equipment uh to between the hours of eight to six, Monday through Friday and nine to five, Saturday and Sunday. So if if the board wanted to address hours of operation, we could use those, they sort of make sense from a a use perspective because they are what the town considers to be, you know, hours that that louder operations are allowed to occur. But I would ask um Mr. Troyer if that type of hours would be appropriate for the uh for the applicant for the the use that they're intending.
Let me talk to my client specifics about it, uh are we looking to set conditions and vote tonight or are we looking?
So what, where so that's, thank you, thank you for that, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
So I think the intent tonight is to try to ferret out what might, what we might want to consider for conditions.
Yeah.
Um, and then we would
I think we're in the range, uh and yeah, I think we're in the range and it's it's definitely, I would love to hear what the conditions are and have further conversations about what those actual conditions are and and how we can adjust them if need be or if they're absolutely fine.
So what we would want to do then is uh do that tonight and then request an extension of the review period and the uh continuance to our fu- our subsequent meeting in two weeks, at which point we would uh discuss with you again, uh once you've had an opportunity to really talk with the with your client about what um how the conditions would work for them and it also gives it an opportunity for the uh for Mr. Semiter and the uh butters to sort of consider what whether those were for them, we could have one final conversation. Um, we would close at the at our hearing um in two weeks. And then we would draft a final decision that would be voted on at our first meeting in May, uh which is May thirteenth.
Yep. Uh, yeah, I understood that process, um
Okay.
um conversation with town council.
Perfect. Um, so are there any comments uh either from the board or from the applicant in regards to um setting the the hours of use to those that are in the town's noise abatement bylaw, which is Monday through Friday, eight to six and Saturday and Sunday, nine to five? Alright. So then the next um uh, so this is loosely following the list of uh questions that the Mr. Semiter had uh put forward. Um, this is about the vehicle size and number. So obviously the the this is a narrow street and is it expressed that large trucks actually can't make make it under the underpass at the bike path. Um, so any vehicle that navigates into this neighborhood has to be able to navigate back out. It's effectively a one-way street for large vehicles. Uh, so we were looking for a standard that we could apply uh to vehicle sizes. Um, and so uh one thing we had, I had come across um so the DOT um has classifications for building, for vehicles, excuse me. And so the, well, I thought, looking at the at the images and the descriptions, sort of the class three, the walk-in is sort of what most resembles a uh a UPS truck. And it's something that would be uh be there. And then as the applicant had stated, um they were probably, they were pretty much determined that they would be using like small pickups, uh vans, uh little delivery trucks. So um I think we would recommend uh limiting um deliveries to the site to of vehicles of class one, two and three, which would be up to fourteen thousand pounds gross vehicle weight. Um, so Mr. Troyer, I'll let you talk offline with your client this week uh about that, as to whether that works for what they're intending. But I think that's what gives us a a place to to have the conversation about what sizes are appropriate. But I think that's what gives us a place to have the conversation about what sizes are appropriate.
Okay.
There's that. We would also recommend, all loading has to take place onsite. I think you've already said that you've already sort of intimated it all. Loading would probably take place inside the building itself. And then loading of vehicles off property is not allowed. So you couldn't park a vehicle on the street and drive stuff out to it. We would want to limit the activities that can take place. I think you had given us a good list earlier. We sort of assessed that through the things. You know, that it would be the storage of equipment of, excuse me, the storage of goods. It would be storage of vehicles that are owned and or operated by the owner. It would be light servings servicing of vehicles owned by the owner and the company. There would be some office function there. There would not be the repair of any equipment onsite. There would not be the any assembly of screens or storm windows or the like onsite. It would really be, and there would be nothing stored outside the confines of the building.
Right, no storage of hazardous materials.
Correct, yeah. So we would want to come up with a solid list so that there's not, there's no confusion as to what will be occurring on this site and and may be occurring on this site.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hamlin.
What you just said about office use and so forth made me think. It is frequently true that when we're talking about using off, you you about having business uses in places where it's customary to have them, like in home occupations, where we address the number of employees onsite. And that's just as a concept that hasn't come up in our discussion yet. But if this were to develop in such a way that the office use got to be more and more important and the storage reuse a little bit less, at some point, it may be useful to have at least a tripwire to for further consideration. That might, and the intensity in this case might be usual.
I think that's fair, Mr. Hamlin, I think that's fair.
Mr. Hamlin, did you have a figure in mind?
No, I didn't. I just thought of it because you said something that triggered it in my mind. Totally off the wall on that.
All right.
I would like to, I would like to learn a little bit more about what from, at this point, in terms of a number, I think that the applicant ought to be thinking about what would be reasonable from their point of view. I don't know that that we're really talking about. And I do think that what we're talking about is not an absolute limitation necessarily, but something that should require an amendment to go beyond it because it may be perfectly reasonable and acceptable for everybody to, for it to be more of an office use. And we don't know and we won't know until we see the, until people see the actual facts. But we may be able to figure out what is sort of beyond the range of a reasonable expectation right now. So that the conversation, when it, when and if it ever becomes necessary, can be addressed. So I don't necessarily consider whatever number we come up with as sort of a final answer to this question. There's more to it than that.
That certainly sounds fair, thank you. We already discussed what kinds of materials and hazardous materials. We would also, just to sort of clarify going forward, we would want to include a condition, something along the lines of the the granting of this special permit supersedes all previous grants. Just to be very clear that the sixty-seven and sixty-three are no longer in effect. We would want to state that the special permit shall expire when the property is transferred or sold or the accessory building is rented to another entity, or should the accessory building become uninhabitable? So effectively that the the use that we are allowing is for the 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 owner who is coming before us, or I should say the prospective owner is coming before us to request the use and that the uses that we are approving is is for their use of the property. And should somebody else want to use the property, they would need to return to the board so that the, it's not transferable. And then another one we're considering. So that complaints regarding the operation of the property to be filed with the inspector of buildings, the complaints already go to him. But if for worse, but we would put that in writing so that it's.
The abutters would know, yep.
If in the opinion, the conditions of the permit are not being followed, the permit may be reviewed, revised, or revoked by the board. It's just, it's just a blank, those both are like statements of the way that things go, the way that things work. But just think it would be helpful to have it in the decision so that it's understandable that the those are the procedures that would be followed should there be an issue. Came up today during the meeting, during the hearing, there's a question about the numbers of vehicles per day, the number of deliveries. I don't know if that's something that we can necessarily narrowed, narrow down, but I think it would be helpful to have a sense as to a range of what can be expected.
No more than X per day.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are there other concerns that members of the board have that we feel ought to be included in a condition?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. DuPont?
So I just, when you said the number of deliveries, I think that, you know, just want to be clear that what we're really talking about is trips to and from the building, right? So if you have a lot that's being delivered from one of the stores to the site and vice versa, I think you need to have an inclusive number for both.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hamlin?
So I know this complicates things a little bit, but we're now getting down to that last bit that we sometimes do in forty B cases of trying to hammer out what if we were to go forward would be the appropriate ground rules. And I know that many of the things that we've talked about all were in Mr. Semiter's memorandum. But I would sort of like to have, I mean, there's, anybody can make these suggestions. And I'd like to encourage if the abutters have got concerns that haven't been expressed yet or concerns that may have been expressed, but it hasn't been thought of in terms of conditions yet. It would be extremely helpful if they would expand and and Mr. Semiter's letter has already done this to a considerable extent. But expand a little bit on what it is they're looking for early on so that the applicant can be apprised of it and and the next time, the the next time will probably be it. So we need to, we need to get on the table everything that needs to, that needs to be on the table and get it talked about early rather than having things come up at at the very end. And this is, this is the time to do that.
Where Mr. Semiter has spoken before to this hearing, I'll call on him again to sort of address the conversation about conditions that we've been having.
I appreciate that, I keep it very brief. I think one thing that I left out is the question of signage. I guess it would be not appropriate for a neighborhood to have a huge Ace Hardware store sign that might distract customers and think that they can stop there and and purchase goods and materials. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hamlin?
So I just would like to ask Mr. Troyer whether it's contemplated that there would actually ever be, at least in the package we have going forward, selling of merchandise from this material. I sort of had the impression that you were not looking to do that, but I wondered if you could.
My understanding, but I will confirm that we're not looking to have customers visit the site at all. It's merely extra storage for the hardware facility, that's it.
And that may very well be something that we ought to nail down a little more.
Well, I think that's also part of if we want to increase the use, I think part of what you're you indicated earlier, I think that it requires an additional permit to increase the type of use after we we identify what what we're looking to do. So I think we're getting there.
That's exactly, none of this is for all time.
Right? Okay. So in addition to the things we had discussed before, talk about retail sales, talking about signage and a number of employees, the number of deliveries per day. So we'll just include those in the list thing. So unless there's other conditions or items that the board thinks are necessary, we have a couple of votes before we can move along. So the first would be, so the current time period to hear this case expires on April twenty-first, which inconveniently is the day before our next hearing. So there's been a discussion between town council and Mr. Troyer about an extension and like, there's been an extension to the second week in May, was it May sixteenth? Was that the date, May fifteenth?
May fifteenth.
Okay. So the the motion to extend the current review period for this application to Thursday, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. This would allow us to hear at our next hearing on April twenty-second to have the final discussion on conditions and close the hearing. And then we would vote on the final decision at the meeting on the thirteenth. And then that would give us a date to sign the, for me to sign and stuff like that, get it over to the town clerk. So so with that, I move that the Board of Appeals extend the review period for docket three eight two one twenty Pond Lane to Thursday, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second?
And Mr. DuPont?
Yes.
That was actually me.
So roll call vote of the board, voting yes or no, Mr. DuPont?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Little Blank?
Yes.
Mr. Branowski?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, so that we have extended the period to May fifteenth. And then with that, move that the Board of Appeals for the Town of Arlington continue the public hearing for docket three eight two one twenty Pond Lane to Tuesday, April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five at seven thirty P M. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second?
Roll call vote of the board to continue voting yes or no, Mr. DuPont?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Little Blank?
Yes.
Mr. Branowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, we are continued on twenty Pond Lane. Really appreciate Mr. Semiter and Mr. Troyer and Mr. Wheatley for being here tonight and for all their assistance in helping us to have come a lot closer to a decision on this act, so thank you.
Thank you, we'll see you and talk to you soon. Thank you very much, have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you as well. With that, we move on to item number five on our docket, which our agenda, which is docket three eight three six one oh three Thorndike Street. Appreciate the patience of the applicants and the members of the public for here to discuss this application. We'll introduce Mr. Alvin, who is the attorney for the the applicant and tell us what they're proposing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, attorney Christopher Alvin from Blatman, Bobrowski, Haverdy and Silverstein, my law offices in Concord. With me is my client, Andy, on the call. I do want to stay upfront that we were expecting our architect to be at the hearing tonight, but he could, he could not make it. But I think we can get through the plans and discuss them in detail tonight. Is it okay if I share my screen, Mr. Chairman?
That would be great. Mr. Alvin, if you could go ahead and make that happen.
Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Great. So I just want to orient the board with where the location of this property is because it's sort of unique. But our structure is the existing structure right here. This is a single-family structure. As you can see, it abuts the recreational property to to the rear and to the west here. And it's sort of a two-lot island that exists here. And so our proposal was simply to reconstruct the single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling. The use is permitted as a right, it's it's in the R-two zoning district, so the use isn't a problem. And in fact, the new structure is going to eliminate certain non-conformities, specifically setback non-conformities. But the structure does need a variance for two-dimensional requirements. That dimension requirements are lock coverage, the maximum lock coverage permitted is thirty-five percent, and the proposal is fifty-six point four percent. And under your zoning bylaw, you have a definition of what is considered a story or or considered what a basement is a story in your definitions of basements, you say basement shall be deemed a story when the ceiling is four feet, six inches or more above the finished grade. Well, we had to go higher than that because we're in the FEMA flood zone. So our basement is above higher than the than required by grade. So our basement is considered a story. So we provide three point five stories when only two point five stories are allowed in the zoning district. We do meet the height regulations, but we do need to variance for those two things. And then in addition to this, as this board knows, because it's a non-conforming structure that exists today on a non-conforming lot, we do also require a a special permit for the reconstruction of a non-conforming structure. And we just feel that this is a adds to a benefit to the neighborhood, that these will be an improvement to the existing structure on the property, that it's in a unique situation where if you apply the bylaw fiercely to this property, there's not much that we can do as far as replacing the structure. So we think that this is something that fits in with the neighborhood, that it's alike a lot of the structures in the neighborhood and that there shouldn't have any adverse effects.
Thank you. So you had noted that it meets the building height requirements, it's thirty-five feet. But the it is three, it's technically three and a half stories because of the the FEMA requirements. Could you explain a little more what the FEMA requirements are to the board?
Yeah, so that's a better question for the architect and the engineer. But the FEMA requirements require, and I put that in my supplemental memo and I submitted two memorandums. I I'm sorry that I had to make a supplement because it's something I discovered after speaking to the architect. But in the the elevation in order to conform with FEMA requirements had to be higher than than six inches above the average grade. So.
So this is in the FEMA AE zone, which is the hundred-year flood zone. The flood elevation in this area is six point eight. But I don't know what it, what the reference height for that is, and I don't know how that relates to the reference elevations for the house itself. But the in the plans, the average grade of the property at the at the house is listed as elevation three with the basement being elevation zero. And then the first floor, I believe, is the elevation nine. So it sort of gives you a sense as to how high this this lowest level is constructed in order to maintain separation from the from the flood level.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so the flood plain is noted on there, oh, good, thank you, yeah. And also just note for the record that this has gone to the Conservation Commission. They did issue a notice of intent on the property to allow it to proceed. They did have some, if, Mr. Troyer, if you don't mind, do you have the site plan?
Yep, site plan here and I, the the Conservation Commission ordered a order conditions that had several conditions to it.
So these are mostly to that, the most sort of salient ones is in the rear yard, they were. They were required a catchment basin, which is the oval shape that you see at the rear of the floor plan. And the parking that's on the side that is pervious pavement, I believe was required.
That's right. There, there is a long list of Conservation Commission requirements that are already placed on the on the property. So everything that the CONCOM has ordered us to do, we'll of course have to follow. Now, sometimes I advise boards to incorporate those conditions into their own decisions. But as far as conservation goes, they issued a decision and they they issued several conditions to the property.
Incisible list. Uh, so you, there's a, the initial letter in support from your office is dated September fourteenth, two thousand twenty two.
Thank you for, thank you for reading my letter very closely. That's a, that's a typo on the on the date, but that that is the only typo I hope.
I'm assuming it's September fourteenth, twenty twenty four?
Yeah, I think that's about right. Yeah.
Oh, okay. There was a note in here about the parking is at the rear, but I believe the parking is now technically on the side.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for being so detailed in your review. Correct. I said it was the rear, but in fact, it is going to be on the side here.
Okay. So the bylaw, our bylaws require that if their parking is in the side yard setback, there has to be a vegetated buffer between the parking and the adjacent property. So that is something that will need to get picked up going forward.
Okay.
Hopefully that's something that can be done without interfering with the conservation prior decision.
Right.
Other one. So a couple of other questions. So one was that the proposed usable open space? Not sure it's being calculated correctly. There was a plan that showed it in color as to what was the usable open space.
So you, the open space here calculated, you think that the four forty three?
It's calculated, it's calculated based on a usable open space of one thousand fifty four square feet, but it's on the, it's actually eight hundred fifty square feet, the way that the town counts it. And so that's just something I I think you're going to need to look at again and make sure. Because usable open space requires it's an area that's at least twenty feet in both directions and the way it's drawn on the plan, it wraps around the corner. So portion of it is only ten feet wide. So that doesn't count towards usable open space. So it's just the area that has twenty feet as the minimum dimension in both directions.
Okay.
And so these are, and then you had the revised memorandum that you proposed on the seventh, and that was the one that specifically addressed the basement grade issue. Great. So these are both four unit, four bedroom units. Is that correct?
Andy, can you speak to that?
Hi, everyone. My name's Andy Chan. The I'm part of the owner and also the structural engineer on this project. Let me double check the footprints. Correct. It's four bedroom units, both four bedroom units.
So there's a request being made for a variance to make a building that's larger than usual for a lot this size and both of them are four units. So I'm curious as to why the units aren't smaller to comply with the bylaw, why they're larger than would normally be allowed requiring a variance.
Well, we're requesting a variance on the lot coverage. So you know, the number of bedrooms.
I mean, if there were two two bedroom unit, be a lot smaller footprint.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's necessarily, I mean, Mr. Chairman, that the point is taken that there could be an argument that the building should be smaller to meet lock coverage the best we could, but I don't know if that should be based necessarily on the number of bedrooms. But but that's fair.
So
you know, ultimately, the size and what is being produced is just what financially makes sense for demolishing a single family dwelling and rebuilding to completely replace a dilapidated single family house. This is what financially makes the most sense.
Okay. So my understanding is that because the existing structure is being demolished and this that none of the existing nonconform, none of the existing nonconformities survive the demolition. So the variance would also need to be for an undersized lot and for the the undersized frontage. Is that your understanding as well?
No, I don't. I don't think that that to be true. Under the bylaw and under forty eight section six, it includes a reconstruction of a nonconforming structure that you're doing a special permit analysis to to apply for something that's being constructed on an undersized lot opposed to you're restarting with nothing. You still have the ability of being a grandfathered structure, even though you're going to be tearing it down and building something new.
And that's not limited to five thousand square feet and a fifty foot of frontage?
No, that's something different. That's when you have a nonconforming lot and you're starting from from scratch on a nonconforming lot. You have to make sure that you meet those requirements of five thousand and fifty square feet of frontage. That's unrelated to rebuilding a preexisting nonconforming structure on a nonconforming lot.
Okay. And I was curious if the applicant had, so we do have in the bylaw ability to reconstruct a an existing foundation that's in section five, four, two, B eight, which basically allows someone to to demolish a house, build a new high efficiency foundation, and then proceed with the rest of the construction. I'm curious if that was something that would have applied in this case or because of the FEMA requirements that it wouldn't actually work?
I totally answered that question. Yeah, that I mean, that's a fair thing for us to investigate though. Certainly, we can look into that.
FEMA requirement is just the first floor has to be at least one foot above the flood plain. That's why our basement, our first floor elevation is higher than the four four six requirement. I think that's what the that's the first renovation designed by the architect.
Okay. And that it's also why that that ground level, the the basement level does have floodgates in it. I can't remember the proper term for that. Water through. I will ask if there are members of the questions from other members of the board.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Little Blank?
I guess I have some comments about at least the east elevation as it pertains to the Arlington Residential Design Guidelines. Sort of to some of our other conversations we've had on other dockets about elevation design. I feel like this that elevation is specifically that's what we can see here on the Axon View one, the the flat elevation. When we look at it in elevation, it it has a lot going on and it doesn't seem to be a lot of order to the to the windows or anything like that. That's sort of what we're trying to outline in the design guidelines. To me, it it reads as the defining what goes on, what's going on on the inside rather than trying to create in a a cohesive look for the exterior of the building. There's a lot of different sizes of windows, different heights of windows and placement and so I'd be curious if it's possible to look at alignment of the windows.
You can definitely work on that. No problem.
Okay. There's a one of the drawings is a section of the section through the upper floor with the roof. Can't remember specifically what sheet that's on.
What are we looking for? I think it's
D four hundred. It's the fourth sheet in the set. Yeah, so the top part there, that section there. So I'm not sure, Mr. Cheng, if you're able to explain a little as to it looks like a very evil structure. So I'm kind of curious as to what the intention here is.
I think the architect told me that we can't go fifty percent over with the seven foot ceiling height other if we do that, then you'll make an actual floor or something like that. Not quite sure what what he
Yeah, so that the top, in order for the top floor to be a half floor, the distance from the finished floor to the underside of the roof structure cannot be more than seven feet for more than fifty percent of the floor. So I think that that's the intention here. What I'm curious about is that like on these side portions here, it looks like it's six foot ten to the underside of the structure. So it's probably six foot eight finished on the sides. Are these rooms, do they meet the height requirement under the building code?
Not sure. I'm predesigned.
I would hope so.
I'll double check with them.
Okay. Yeah, it's it's a, it's a very unusual structure. I have not seen a structure like this before. So I'm just trying to make sure that it actually does what it's supposed to. And that it but obviously
I think we did a project last year with the same situation and we got approved with this design.
Okay. Other questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question.
Mr. Branowski?
So when you say that the existing structure is in poor condition and needs to be redeveloped, redeveloped, I'm just curious if you could speak more about the the nature of the existing structure and, you know, the extent to which it need, like what exactly is, can you speak more to 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 its current condition?
Yeah, the the foundation has a lot of major cracks because the soil is not in good condition. We did a geotechnical report and the geotech and nickel engineer recommend us to use piles on this project. So all the new foundation will be resting on piles. The existing floor have sagging and sloping all over the place. Cracks on dry walls all over the place.
Thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hamlin?
So one thing that we always are into when we talk about variances are what we've broken down into the four criteria, which and and it would be helpful, I guess, if Mr. Alvin would go through those and lay out what he thinks meets these. We've often come I I sort of understand where they're coming from with respect to soil conditions, I suspect, is what the foundation is of in part one. But we haven't really talked about that in any detail and I'm not a hundred percent sure that I understand what the arguments are with respect to unreasonable hardship. The others are important too, but but those are easier to figure out. The first two are the ones that are more difficult to to get your arms around.
That's right, and I can appreciate that. I tried to lay it out the best I could in in the memorandum that I provided. But basically, you know, en enforcing a literal, a literal enforcement to the bylaw, it'd be very difficult to replace this with anything. If we had to meet all the dimensional requirements without just trying to rebuild the dilapidated existing structure in its same form. It would be very difficult to construct if we enforced a literal, a literal enforcement of of the bylaw. We would be left with a nonconforming structure which size and condition condition are not harmonized with the surrounding neighborhood. The proposed project will improve the property and provide a benefit to the neighborhood. The the hardship is owing to circumstances related to soil conditions, shape or topography. Because as we just spoke, the property is in a flood zone, has interesting soil that has dilapidated the existing single structure there. Also, the property is unique because it abuts recreational land to its rear and westerly side. There's ample open space and recreational space in the median area. And due to the long narrow shape of the lot, it would be difficult to design a dwelling that meets all the dimensional requirements. The proposed project, as far as dimensional requirements goes, only does not meet lock coverage. And and then there's the dimensional requirement of of stories. The proposed dwelling is consistent with the other dwellings. And we believe that the relief can be granted without a substantial detriment to the public good or nullifying substantially decorating for the intent or purpose of the bylaw. Because permitting the removal of the preexisting nonconforming structure and allowing the proposed project will not be a substantial detriment to the public good or the intent of the bylaw, the petitioner proposes a well-designed site plan that will place an outdated nonconforming structure. The proposed project is an improvement in the neighborhood and fits comfortably with the surrounding area. The nonconforming lock coverage will be have a minimus impact on the surrounding area. And just going back, you know, we've sort of spoke about it before, but really the hardship because that's something that I know boards really focus on is that in rehabilitating this property, the only way out financially that makes sense is tearing down the single family and building something else. And it's just very difficult, given the unique status of 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 the lot to build something that meets all the dimensional requirements.
So the rear portion is on. Basically is set on columns with with it being open underneath. What's the intention of that area underneath?
I think something about the flat. Zone and the um. Comcom request, we can't make that enclosed, so the water, water has nowhere to go or something like that. Or yeah, yeah.
I don't have the expertise to speak about this, other than I know when my clients um. Building FEMA flood zones, there are obvious, the 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 trend right now is to put things on on. On things like this, that usually the conservation commissions preference to build things like this so that you keep the structure above grade.
Are you aware of any way that it could be screened? I'm just sort of, I'm. Uncertain what's.
Sure.
Yeah, if that's if that's the board's preference as far as design goes. Um, the Conservation Commission is okay with screening that. I'm sure it's not an issue.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the board? At this time, not, I would love to open. Okay, uh, so at this point, I will open this meeting, this hearing for public comment. Public comment is taken as it relates to the matter at hand and is to be directed to the chair for the purpose of informing his decision. Uh, members of the public who wish to speak can digitally raise their hand using the button on the React tab of their calling. You can dial star nine to indicate you'd like to speak. Um, you'll be identified, you'll be asked to give your name and address for the record um, and make your questions, make your comments known um. And the public comment period will remain open until um. All members of public wishing to speak have had an opportunity to speak or we've uh gone past ten, let's say ten fifteen. Um, so with that, uh. Uh, I believe it's David Stoff has raised their hand. David?
Am I audible?
You are.
I am, I am David Stoff. I am at eighty.
Hope we just lost you.
Parking requirements for this uh site.
Sorry, Mr. Stop, I apologize. You froze there for a minute.
What are the parking requirements for the site? To the board?
So the parking requirements uh for a two-family, it's required that there be two parking spaces. Um, the spaces. Cannot be located between the house and the street. Um, they could be, they could be located in a side yard. As long as there's a uh some kind of a vegetated buffer, or they can be located in the rear yard or in a garage. So for this property, they have to provide parking for two vehicles um past the front lot line and they're doing that in their side yard.
Yes, and the drawings do indicate that, and my comment is that the parking is inadequate. And that unlike other sites, this will have a direct impact on a recreational facility owned by the town. And puts public safety at risk. And since you are, uh, I'm resigned to this project and I do believe it's. Uh, basically an improvement, but since you are talking about. Uh, building the project up. I think you should consider elevating it enough to put some of, some or all of the parking. In what you're now using as a basement area. Uh, designs like this have been used in the area. I believe the design overrun, I think it's Dorothy Road. A budding Thorndike Field is similar. But um, this is going to burden the area and it really is a, in that sense, it's a poor design. I know that you've complied with the bylaw, but since. Since you are doing this and this is on paper, that is the comment I would like to make. I think uh. Granting it as designed as you show here just simply shifts an enforcement burden onto the community because clearly. Two four-bedroom units are going to have more than two cars attached to them. And to the extent that these people are going to be playing shuffle in the driveway. Next to a park that creates an unsafe condition. So you've heard the comment, it's a comment you've probably heard before with other projects and I ask you to uh consider. Uh, for the board to consider allowing this project to be higher. If they choose to go that way to accommodate the parking and then I have an additional question. It concerns something that you can see on this drawing when you uh. Click the magnification on it, but there is a catch basin near what is indicated on the drawing as a well. And that catch basin connects to the Magnolia Street pump. Uh, the town actually provide, it's lower than. It may not be lower than the bottom of your detention basin, but it's definitely lower than the majority of your yard. And to the extent that the town is providing drainage on this site, I am just wondering what what. Kind of obligation that creates on the part of the town. Because should that system fail? And um, you know, or not be able to provide adequate service because I know you're designing to the existing floodplain, but. Flood maps produced by the city of Cambridge show twenty fifty conditions and that elevation is higher. So uh, you are going to be relying on a town service to keep part of this site dry. So what kind of obligation is that going to create?
Mr. Stuff, you identified a a well?
No, it's a catch basin.
Oh, the catch basin, sorry.
It's adjacent to what is, the well is so much more visible than the catch basins. In the same area, but a little distance, it's close, it's closer to the Magnolia Pump Station. Between the basketball court and the site.
Okay.
Yeah, I spoke with one of the uh members of the Concom about this that were. Um, you know, they've already issued their order and I think they've done a thorough job, but I want that. To be in the record for everyone to know that this could be a potential problem.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you for hanging in there until almost ten o'clock, guys. I'm not, I'm leaving.
Are there other members of public who wish to address this? Mr. Moore?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair Steve Moore Piedmont Street. Um, I uh have followed avidly the board's on the. Involvement with various projects around Thorndike Street and Thorndike Place and this area of town. Um, and the fact that we continue to. Grapple with floodplain issues and building just uh surprises me that. We continue to push to build larger and larger structures. Into what is amounts to a worsening and worsening flood situation in the area. Um, and that's just sort of a personal comment. Um, I I I want to say that the definition of a public good often seems to be somewhat in the eye of the beholder and we've heard a lot about. Um, the public good being uh supported and expanded and this being a good thing. And I just uh want to speak to the design of this particular structure, which is quite large and quite tall. And I understand why that is. It's sort of the uniques of the site. But um, I'm particularly concerned about what I think of, hold on. What I think of is a a kind of a slab wall side. Not sure what that's going to face. I guess it's the neighboring house. It's a little, little uncertain in terms of the sighting because. As always, when these plans come up and are are shown elevations, we don't see anything around it to give perspective, I mean, not perspective as much as. Um, uh, typical size proportions and. I'm not sure how close that wall, if it is facing the neighboring house, is going to be to the neighboring house, but. I'm not sure if I was in the neighboring house, I would appreciate that. It's it's not, it's not a becoming design. It creates probably serious shadowing. The structure is just very large for the lot, um, and it ends up being also very tall for the lot. Um, because of the floodplain conditions, it's trying to, trying to ameliorate and uh. I just. I don't know, this just, this this whole leaves me, the whole design leaves me cold. This is going to be quite exposed to the public property of the town. Um, and quite large and just um, not necessarily a a good harmonious design that goes with the. Uh, the location. I'm not sure there are any other houses in the neighborhood that have this kind of look. Um, at all, it's a, it's a very different kind of look, almost to the point of a uh, uh, sort of a podium house, or what did they call this, flattened domes? And uh, again, quite large. Um, so anyway, that's just sort of a personal observation and I don't, I don't find this design particularly well fitting for the area. Thank you, Mr. Chu.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Are there other members of the public? Period, uh, or who wish to address the. Application? See, none of them could go ahead and close stuff. This current hearing for app uh for public comment. Um. So what the board has before, there's a variance application and a special permit application. Um. Seeking to demolish the existing uh single-family house on the property and uh. Construct a new two-family um on the property. Um, as was noted by the applicant, there are a number of um. Points that would require a variance, um. One of which is that they would be exceeding the lock coverage. Um. One is that uh because of the way the definition of uh. Story works for the basement, the basement here qualifies as a story and therefore it's four and a half, three and a half, excuse me. Rather than the two and a half that's allowed under the bylaw. Um. But the house is designed to meet the thirty-five foot uh maximum height, so that would not be an issue. Um. I'd identified earlier, I think there's an issue with the usable open space. I think that that is also um. An additional uh new non-conformity. Um. In that the. That the, that there's possibly only eight hundred fifty square feet of usable open space, not the amount that was um. Indicated on the form. Um. The. Just one of, the application is requesting. Um. For special permit. Uh, let's see. On the app. Okay, and sorry, that is on the notice, that doesn't matter. Um.
So it's a special permit under section eight, one, one A, and that's the non-conforming section. And then also, um, there is a requirement that when. There's so much added to um, a non-conforming structure under three point three, a special perm is required. I think we would just be under the non-conforming structure, uh, um. Reconstruction, but that's just my opinion, uh, we're fine to apply under both sections.
Yep, yeah, so if there's an, if you increase the gross floor area of a building outside the initial footprint by more than seven hundred fifty square feet. It requires a special permit under five four two B six. That's specific sections, a large addition. Um. Um, then the bit, the various, uh, we talked about the conservation requirements. Um. Quick to the new structure, so. Do you still have a couple of outstanding questions? Um, and there were a couple of suggestions that had to come up in regards to the building, some. Um. I think it would be important if you, if the applicant could take a look again at the usable open space. And see how that works. Um. And then there was also, um. Taking another look at the at the exterior elevations and trying to, um. Make sure, yeah, but so that the town has residential design guidelines, um, they are guidelines, they are not enforceable. But they do give a sense as to what the town is looking for um in residential development, so if those haven't been referenced, that would. Encourage just taking a look at them to have a sense as to what is in them. Um. But they they are, uh, they are guidelines for development, they're not. Um, regulation.
Understood, we will take a close look at that and see if we can apply them.
Okay, um. So if the board was to uh request a continuance, how much time would you be looking for?
I think um, we'd like to keep this moving, I'm su- assuming Andy, um, and our. Architect and engineer are pretty responsive, so we'd be com- comfortable extending for for uh continuing to the next month.
So uh, so we could, um, that would be May thirteen?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Actually do the the two weeks, the next, the two weeks after.
So a month and two weeks, I guess, would be better, yeah.
Uh, so instead of the thirteenth, it would be twenty seventh. Assuming I did my math, right? May twenty seven. Yep. Okay.
Um. And and you know, we would obviously, we we've written down everything that the board has said. Uh, we'll make certainly revisions to the plans and then address the comments in a memorandum that were made tonight.
Perfect.
Oh, sorry, my apology. I I mean, two weeks after today, not two weeks after the one.
You wanted to go that quick, huh?
We were, yeah, we're, yeah, we're pretty responsive, um, making changes, so. If you can put it under the April twenty second, that would be great.
Ms. Rollson, what is our? Docket look like in two weeks?
Um, so right now, I think with the addition of twenty Pond Lane, we're at four or five. I believe we are at four and this would be number five, because thirty-nine Woodside is um. Next, right, next week.
Okay.
Three new ones, Woodside and Twenty Pond.
Okay. Three new plus pond plus what's that, yeah. Um.
We'll leave, we'll leave it to you, Mr. Chen.
Yeah, if you'd be okay with May thirteenth, we would appreciate it.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dupont?
So I also um would just like to mention a couple of things that I am looking to get some clarification on. And um, so. So one of the things that uh Mr. Hanlon asked, because he went through what we do when we do our regular variance analysis. And if I understand wh- what we're saying or what, you know, we're we're hearing is that. Uh, some of this is predicated upon the soil conditions unique to the property. Uh, although they may be actually something that is um. Part of the makeup of the area in general, so I'm I'm not sure what to do with that. But if I understood correctly, you know, there's the floodplain issue and I I could certainly see that as part of the soil condition. And at the height of the basement and the question of a story has to be adjusted, so that part I think I I get. Um, and but I'd like to get clarification as to whether or not we're being told. That the entire building essentially has to be demolished because the floor has to be demolished. Uh, because of the, I'm not a structural engineer, so I didn't understand all of it, but. You know, there's the concept that you couldn't really not take out the whole thing, that you couldn't build on what's there already just because. Of the soil condition underneath the uh, the foundation, uh, so I I want to know whether or not that's accurate. Um. Because if it is, it sounds like what we're hearing is that the demolition of the building is. Premised upon the fact that it's somehow unsafe. And that's as a result of the soil conditions. And as a result of that, a complete demolition is necessary, and I think Mr. Alphen said that. Under forty-eight section six. Uh, it's, he considers it to be a reconstruction, and so even with the complete demolition. And so even with the complete demolition, there doesn't have to be adherence to the current zoning requirements. So I want to get some clarification on that, and perhaps that's, uh, from town council. The last point that I'd like to get clarification on is how does the increase in the lot coverage that's being requested under variance, uh, how does that fit with soil condition if that's what it is? Because I'm not sure that I get the connection as to why it has to be beyond the size that would be permitted by right on the, on the lot. So those things I think I'd like to see fleshed out a little bit more, uh, before any decisions are made.
Thank you, Mr. Dupont.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hanlon?
Can I, um, as one of the, is the, is the other, one of the other lawyers on the board, I, on some of these, i- i- these issues, I, I understand, uh, what Mr. Alphen has been saying. I haven't seen these, these specific, I haven't seen these things coming up in exactly this way before, and I'm sure that, that he will immediately think of authority one way or the other that, that can help, help us conceptualize how it is that, that what we're planning on here fits into, uh, into the law relating to variances generally. And I just encourage him to at least keep his mind open, uh, to that. And I know that, that, uh, things are almost always contestable and it would be nice to, where there is authority that, that supports a position one way or the other, it would be nice for us to know what it was.
Sure, absolutely. Um, you know, uh, variances are unique and there's always arguments one way, uh, another on variances, uh, but they're, they're granted all day, every day for a reason, uh, but, uh, but I understand the board's comments.
Thank you. Are there other items that the board would like to seek clarification on over the, over the coming weeks before we reconvene? Seeing none. Um, go ahead, if I can ask Mr. Alphen, if you go ahead and stop the share. Um. So we are looking to, um, we discussed having, continuing the hearing. Um, we were looking at Tuesday, May thirteenth. So I, there being no more, um, discussion, uh, to be had this evening, I move that the zoning board of appeals to the town of Arlington, continue the public hearing for docket three, eight, three, six, one oh three Thorndike Street to Tuesday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five at seven thirty P M. Have a second. Mr. Hanlon? Uh, so this is a vote, roll call vote of the board, voting yes or no to continue, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Bernowski?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, we are continued on one oh three Thorndike Street. Thank you very much for.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your patience. Thank you, I appreciate it.
So this brings us back to our agenda, and I skipped a few things at the start, so we're going to go back to item number two on our agenda. Uh, this is the, uh, vote to, uh, adopt the decision in docket three, eight, three, five, twenty-eight Draper Street. Um, this is a case that had a couple of hearings before us, um. We had closed the hearing at our prior hearing, um, if we have a decision that was prepared by Mr. Hanlon, uh, sent to the board for questions and comments and a final version reissued to the board this afternoon. Are there any additional questions or comments as they relate to the, um, draft decision for twenty-eight Draper Street? Seeing none, uh, I will move that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington approve and adopt the written decision in docket three, eight, three, five, twenty-eight Draper Street, which grants a special permit under section eight point one point one point A in the zoning bylaw.
Second.
Second.
Okay, so then, um, roll call vote, voting yes or no, uh, from the voting members of the board at that hearing? Uh, so that would be Mr. Dupont? Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, um. As Mr. Hanlon is, I don't think Mr. Bernowski, Mr. Bernowski, were you present at all the hearings for?
He missed one.
I missed that, I missed that one.
Oh, you missed that one, okay. So the, the fifth vote would be, uh, Mr. Holly, who is unable to vote this evening, but a vote of four to zero is an approval, so that is approved. Um, brings us to item three on our agenda, members vote meeting minutes, uh, March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, so these are minutes of the meeting that were prepared by, uh, Ms. Ralston, distributed to the board for questions and comments. Are there any additional questions or comments for the meetings from our March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five meeting? Seeing none, I'll move that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington approve the minutes from the March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the board. Now have a second.
Second.
Next, Mr. Hanlon? So vote of the board, uh, those members present, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yeah.
And the chair votes yes, those are approved. So that is the last of the business that is scheduled for this meeting, um. The, as the Ralstons have already noted, uh, the next meeting of the board is April twenty-second. Uh, we have three new cases plus two continuances on that evening, uh, so that's going to be a pretty full night again. Um, and then we just, uh, put something on the docket for May thirteenth. Um, so we want to go onwards and onwards, um. Also note that town meeting starts on April twenty-eighth, so the May thirteenth hearing will probably occur between two sessions of town meeting, um. With any luck at all, that will not be the case on May twenty-seventh, but one never knows. Now with that, um, unless there's anything further, I think we are prepared to adjourn. I would like to thank you all for your participation in tonight's meeting of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals. I appreciate everyone's patience throughout the meeting, and I especially like to thank Colleen Ralston, Mike Champa, Mike Cunningham, and Jacqueline Munson for their assistance in preparing for and hosting this online meeting. Please note the purpose of the board's recording of the meeting is to ensure the creation of an accurate record of the proceedings. It is our understanding that the recording made by ACMI will be available on demand at acmi.tv within the coming days. If anyone has comments or recommendations, please send them via email to zba@town.earlington. MA.us. That email address is also listed on the zoning board of appeals website. And to conclude tonight's meeting, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Mr. Dupont? A roll call vote of the board, yes or no to adjourn, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Bernowski? The chair votes yes, the board is adjourned, thank you all very much.